Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, August 15th, 2023 study session of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with Councilmember Huen and Cooper excused, and Councilmember Madron coming to us remotely. Chair of Land Use Councilmember Madron. So today, we have two business items, although there's no decisions that will be made. This is just a briefing. The first will be a rental housing proposed program, a rental housing registration proposed program scope. And the second one is the Olympia Strong Economic Resilience Update. So we are going to get going because this is a beefy agenda. We'll start with the rental housing registration proposed program scope. And it's my pleasure to introduce Krista Lenson, our Senior Housing Program Specialist in the City Manager's Office. And she'll be joined by Darian Lightfoot, who is our Housing Program Director.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present on the proposed registration and inspection program tonight. So today, we'll go over some goals for the program, an overview of the proposed structure, costs and resources needed to implement the program, some additional policy and program considerations for you all, and then have a discussion on options presented and next steps. So why consider a registry and inspection program? Similar programs have been implemented across Washington and across the nation. The program will allow for increased communication with rental property owners and managers to inform them of law changes, resources, and other city programs. During our community engagement last year, we heard from renters and landlords that it's easier to comply when information is easy to access and that it's helpful to have everyone on the same page. One thing I've heard repeatedly from landlords in the community is that it's difficult for them to keep up with changing state and local regulations. So this will provide us a tool to have that communication channel open. Inspections will ensure basic health and safety requirements are met, and staff will work with property owners to address any issues. Many renters don't report issues for fear of retaliation, so it's important to address issues more proactively. Olympia Strong data shows us that renters have been hardest hit by economic impacts and recovery after the COVID-19 pandemic. And many renters reported seeing steep rent increases over the last couple of years without seeing any significant improvements to the properties they're renting. Studies have also shown us that many community groups, such as immigrants and refugees, are even less likely to report issues. We also heard in our Fair Housing Survey that many residents with disabilities can be negatively impacted by unit conditions and environmental factors in their housing. So in this program, we aren't looking to penalize landlords. Rather, we want to work with them to preserve our housing stock, which is good for our entire community. Inspections also have added value of helping us meet climate program goals to establish a rental housing energy efficiency baseline. The city can also obtain baseline data about housing units and rents to inform our policy or programmatic decisions and observe impacts of policy change. This could be especially helpful as we're planning for housing that's affordable at various income levels, as is now required by state law. So extensive public process led to tenant protection ordinance that was passed last year by council. Feedback from that process has been considered and incorporated into the program proposal. And staff will continue to use communication channels provided by the registry to be responsive to community needs. I interviewed several cities who implemented similar programs in Washington State to hear about their recommendations and lessons learned. One other city provided the advice to not be afraid to adapt the program over time and to be adaptive to add value or adjust to meet needs. We particularly heard that more resources and information is helpful to both landlords and tenants. CDBG funds can be used to offset rental rehabilitation costs for landlords who rent to low-income tenants. And staff will continue to explore incentives and resources to provide to landlords who rent at affordable rates. I'll present information tonight as well about relocation assistance programs in the event that a property is condemned or needs substantial renovation, which could lead to tenant displacement. Many inspection programs shut down during the COVID-19 pandemic, and that raised an important consideration about people's health and safety and an inspector coming into their unit. And we heard through the Fair Housing Survey some similar concerns about people with chronic health issues having a third party come into their unit. So staff will work to develop a process for tenants to request reasonable accommodation in the event we need to select alternate units for inspection. We also heard that public-facing information would be really helpful for renters in the community to find out more about prospective units that they might rent. So we'll work on creating some public-facing information so that they can review compliance and unit information. The Land Use and Environment Committee asked about the city's legal authority to inspect renter-occupied manufactured homes. And we did find out that we may include those homes in the inspection program. For more context, the Department of Labor and Industries regulates inspection of homes at assembly and for certain alterations to the home. So after work is conducted, an inspection is then conducted to make sure that the work was completed properly. And so those homes could, those property owners could just submit that report to us to make sure that improvements were made. So to provide a little bit more information on the process, so staff is proposing that inspections occur on a five-year cycle. Property owners would be notified when their inspections would be due for their properties and select a third-party inspector from a list of city-certified inspectors. So for multifamily properties, 20% of units would be inspected during that cycle. And then if a property has 20 or fewer units, no more than four units would be inspected once during that five-year cycle. So rental property owners would also register with the city annually and apply for a rental housing endorsement through the Department of Revenue Business License System. Private inspectors would go through a training just on the city's administrative process and our checklist requirements that we develop. And then they would be put on our city inspector list. And they would use our checklist and then submit the information back to us to review. The city would then issue a certificate of compliance. That is good for the five years until their units are up for inspection again. Or if there are deficiencies that need to be remedied, they would notify the owner and then work with them to address those repairs. Reinspections would also be completed to make sure that those issues are remedied. So there will be a few exemptions. So nearly all rental units will be required to register annually and obtain a business license. So renter, room rentals where the owner resides in the property would be exempted. And housing that is regulated by other state authorities, like an adult family home, or housing that's incidental to provision of other services, like if they're receiving medical care or it's a clean-and-sober housing, a transitional program. Government and nonprofit-owned affordable housing units would be exempted from fees. And staff recommends also considering waiving or reducing the fees for affordable units provided by the 12-year MFT program or low-income housing tax credit properties. Most rental units will be required to be inspected as a condition to renew their business license. The exception would be owner-occupied properties where they only rent out one unit, such as if they have an ADU on their property, or they live in one side of a duplex and rent the other. Affordable housing properties are already required to be inspected by a third party. So housing authority properties would be included under that. So if they are already required to complete a periodic inspection, they could just submit that inspection report to the city and wouldn't have to double up on their inspections. Staff would also recommend providing free inspection to affordable 12-year multifamily tax credit exemption properties. And these inspections would only begin 10 years after issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So new construction would not be under this requirement unless we find that there are code violations on site. So residential energy use is currently the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in our region. While newer buildings are constructed to meet more efficient standards, most homes in this region were built before 1988. More than 2/3 of the housing units that will exist in 2050 already exist today. So retrofitting existing buildings is a key strategy to achieve Olympia's climate goals. While energy efficiency improvements can pay for themselves over time through reduced heating and cooling expenses, the upfront cost can be a barrier for many. This is particularly true for rental households who have little to no control over selecting appliances or making efficiency improvements. The benefits of energy improvements extend far beyond just reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Improving the energy performance of a home can also reduce energy bills and improve the health, safety, and comfort of building occupants. So the Thirst and Climate Mitigation Plan actions are listed below, and they identify several actions to reduce energy use of existing rental housing, including residential energy performance ratings, rental housing energy efficiency initiatives, and a rental housing energy efficiency baseline. So one policy that our staff is looking at to, as a model that might be adapted for our use is Boulder Colorado's Smart Regs policy. So Boulder adopted minimum efficiency standards in 2010, which required all rentals, which is over half of their housing stock, to be fully compliant by the end of 2018. The policy's stated dual goal was carbon emissions reduction and improving quality, safety, and marketability of Boulder's rental housing stock. Residential properties can reach compliance through a prescriptive performance path, which requires inspection to be completed by a certified rental energy efficiency inspector. There is a checklist with points for energy efficiency and water conservation. The most common upgrades completed to rental properties to meet, to meet compliance are attic insulation, crawl space insulation, and wall insulation. Other areas which typically improve rental unit and building energy efficiency points are upgrading heating and cooling equipment, windows, and duct leakage and infiltration testing. So all long-term rental properties in the city of Boulder must be licensed before occupancy. And as of January 2019, Smart Regs compliance is also required for rental licensing. As of December 2017, the average cost of upgrades to reach compliance was less than $3,000 per property. So the scope of this program in Olympia is listed in the chart below. So we estimate there are around 15,000 total rental units in the city. So that would mean about 3,000 units would be inspected every year in that five-year cycle. So about 200 units would be exempted where their owner occupied with one rental unit on site. And in those properties, we've suggested that they could submit a self-certification, go through our checklist, and self-identify if they need to make any upgrades. And then if there are any code violations reported and found, they could be subject to future inspections and required to go through that inspection process in a future cycle. I do want to note that this chart doesn't include possible annexation. So looking at the southeast area of Olympia, we're estimating that there are around 1,100 additional rental units that could be added in. And then on the side, it shows some of those properties that could submit an alternate inspection report to the city. And between those two, there are roughly 2,000 units that fall in that category. So some estimated costs, what this will mean for landlords. If we have an annual registration fee of $30 to $35 per unit, affordable housing properties would be exempted from that. Business license, there already should be licensing of rental housing properties, but it's not explicit in our code. And so we estimate that some smaller properties are likely not licensed at this time. The initial application to have a business license with Department of Revenue is $50, and then it's $5 annually to renew. Olympia has an additional endorsement of $30 per year. And then inspection costs, this was gathered through interviews with certified inspectors who were doing similar work in King County. So this is based on the information that they've provided. Cost ranges for larger complexes are about $25 to $35 per unit, plus their travel costs. And then $140 to $280 for single-family homes, duplexes, and smaller properties. And then reinspection costs were highly dependent on the property's size. And one inspector provided an hourly rate of $75 per hour. So one thing I heard consistently from other cities was that adequate staffing for enforcement was key to the success of the program. Cities with similar programs had very different rates of participation due to lack of enforcement capacity. We expect that we might not get full compliance right away and may need to use general funds to support positions in the first two years of operation. Program fees will fund operations over time as we gain compliance. And staff expects that about two and a half full-time staff would be needed to support the program. In year one, the program could operate with one and a half staff as we, if we start out with a voluntary compliance, communication and outreach, and then begin enforcing in year two. I did also want to note that climate and housing staff have jointly applied for grant funding, which would offset those costs of implementation. And we hope to hear back about that grant opportunity by September 1st, I think it is. So I have provided a couple of examples for projected costs and revenue at different rates. So this is at a $30 registration fee per unit. And then starting with higher or lower compliance rates, so starting out with a lower compliance rate of 25%. And you can see I've subtracted some of the suggested exemptions for affordable housing and then added in additional business license revenue that's anticipated. And staff costs reflect 2024 staffing rates. And it does, in the years following, it does include an average of 4% cost of living adjustment. And again, this does not include the annexation of those 1,100 units. And this figure is also just for the $35 per unit rate. And these are also provided in the attachment. But I did want to note that I included the suggestion for the affordable MFT units and the low-income housing tax credit units after the attachment went out. So that's where that, if you see a difference in those numbers with your attachment, I just wanted to explain that difference. So projected costs to landlords at those rates described. If they are inspected once every five years, I've averaged that out to a yearly rate. So you can see here, just for example, properties, what this fee structure looks like for a duplex, a 20-unit property, and a 300-unit property. Some additional financial considerations. We heard from both renters and landlords about the value of having education around landlord-tenant laws and legislative changes. So if the city contracts with any third parties, we could create some curriculum and provide online training or webinars for landlords and tenants. Staff also recommends that we would pay for inspection costs for affordable 12-year MFT properties if an inspection is not already required due to tenants having housing vouchers. So there's currently only about 86 units in our portfolio, so we don't anticipate that would have a very significant budget impact at this time. Funds may also be needed in the future if the city pursues any kind of incentive options for private landlords who rent at more affordable rates. And funds may be needed if the city adopts a relocation assistance policy. So there are two types of relocation assistance that I'll be going over today that relate to housing unit conditions and potential displacement if a unit is either condemned or needs substantial repairs. There are other types of relocation assistance, such as Seattle's Economic Displacement Relocation Assistance. But I'll just be covering these two programs today for your consideration. So landlords are already required to provide relocation assistance if a unit is condemned. In other cities, such as Taquilla, Lakewood, and Kent, funds may be advanced by the city if the landlord fails to pay within a specific timeframe. And then the city seeks reimbursement from the landlord. The amount is $2,000 or three times the monthly rent, whichever is greater of the two. And then the other program is a cost-sharing program. So this is if, if a unit needs to be substantially repaired and a tenant is displaced. The statute says that the city can require up to half is paid by the landlord. And that would be paid only if the tenant is low-income and below 50% of their median income. So Tacoma has both of those policies. But I wanted to give you some cost estimates for the second program, which requires more of a city investment. So both Seattle and Tacoma split those relocation assistance funds 50/50 with the landlord. And here's just some numbers that they reported from their program over the last few years. As you can see, there was a bigger jump in Tacoma in this biennium because they budgeted additional staffing for housing navigators to help them navigate finding new housing opportunities. So additional policy recommendations for today. These are things that would take less staff time to implement. And there are model policies in other cities that we could, that we could follow pretty easily. So failure to comply with the program would be a defense to eviction. So if the landlord has failed to comply with our program and requirements and to be licensed, the tenant could use that as a defense in an eviction proceeding. Prohibition on forwarding costs to tenants for requirements of the registry, such as charging them the inspection cost that's required by the city. Prohibiting retaliation against a tenant for exercising their rights under the tenant protections provided in OMC 5.82. And just to provide some context for that, we've been contacted by multiple tenants who believe that their landlord is not complying with the requirement to provide the proper notice for rent increases. And they expressed a fear of retaliation at their landlord if they asserted their rights to their landlord. Cap on late fees, which includes notice fees. I'm going to cover that in a little bit more detail here in the next slide. So Seattle recently passed an ordinance that caps late fees and prohibits other fees for late payment of rent. So recently, I was contacted by a legal aid attorney who talked to me about the practice of charging tenants for a fee for preparing and delivering a notice in addition to a late fee for late payment of rent. So you can see on the sample ledger that she provided that there is a $75 late payment fee and then a $75 legal service fee to provide the tenant a notice. So Seattle's ordinance addresses that, they cap the late fee at $10 per month. And then they prohibit the landlord from charging those legal service fees and passing that cost on to tenants. Some additional policy elements for consideration today. Other cities prohibit rent increases if a unit does not meet the health and safety standards outlined in their registration and licensing program. In Syracuse, New York, a landlord is not allowed to accept rent if their unit does not meet health and safety standards. So there is some precedent for tying rent increases and rent to the property conditions. Repeated violations of OMC 5.82 could result in fines, denial, or revocation of the license. And to provide more background, the city's tenant protections currently are all tenant-enforced. However, this would allow staff to have some regulatory authority if there's violations found after we have attempted repeatedly to provide education and outreach efforts on the policies. Many other cities nationwide use their registries as a compliance tool for other landlord-tenant protections. There are several municipalities who have rent regulations in California who use the registry to enforce those provisions. These are longer-term goals, but things that were important pieces of feedback from the community that I wanted to include in the presentation today. So updates related to mold. So according to Thurston County Healthy Home Staff, the major barrier to them addressing mold issues is a lack of effective codes. So their staff suggested if we had updated codes, the city could provide several years of advance notice to get into compliance and do education and outreach around that. The city could also create an incentive program for landlords who rent at affordable rates or partner with a community organization to take direct tenant referrals, such as providing a risk mitigation fund that would match the state's program or provide other kinds of fee waivers. At this point, we really have no clear estimates on the number of private market units that would be considered affordable to low-income households or the impact on the projected fee revenue. So staff recommends gathering baseline data and determining our funding capacity to support these programs. So this concludes the presentation. I would love your feedback on the proposed scope and exemptions that I've presented today, the fee schedule, and the staffing and budget request, as well as code language around relocation assistance, regulatory authority to enforce tenant protections at the city, and to prohibit rent increases if the unit doesn't meet health and safety standards. So thank you.
Thank you, Krista. So what's hard is that what you need us to give feedback on can't be up there while we're talking with Danny, right? Or can it? Can we share? Can we share? Because we don't have the printout of the presentation, so it's really hard to... That's what I'm wondering. Is that possible? Yeah. So in the meantime, great presentation, very thorough. And the staff report was very, very robust. You can tell you spent a lot of time on this. And my understanding is it's already been through Land Use. And so we've got our Chair of Land Use on the screen. So Danny, can you tell us, before we start the discussion and questions, can you tell us a little bit about the discussion you had in Land Use?
Sure. You know, I think that Krista's presentation actually reflects the discussion that we had in Land Use. This is something that we've been working on for some time since we did the last round of tenant protections. And I will just say that this program has been co-created with the Land Use Committee and Krista. She's come back to us and taken our feedback and shaped the program to what you see today. And we haven't taken any official vote in Land Use because it's been in the making, but it has been unanimously supported by all three of us on the committee.
So every policy, this whole, you know, the whole presentation, you would support?
Yes.
The scope? Okay.
Yes.
All right. I'll open it up to our other council members here in the room. See if there's any additional questions. I've got a bunch, but I'm going to be the facilitator for a while.
My question is, well, there's, I've got a bunch. I'll start with one and then pass it off.
There you go.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
My first one is the energy efficiency portion. My assumption, and assumptions could get you in trouble, is that would be a different inspection because you're asking, one, to look at the codes of health and safety, and then you'd have to have somebody who's certified in energy efficiency, you know, maybe from the National Energy Group. Or would you require your inspectors to have both certifications? Because I guess where I'm going with that is I'm not sure of the nexus between those and then the extra cost that it could incur by having both of those inspections occurring.
Right. I think the intention is that, you know, we're trying to reduce as much, you know, barriers as possible. So as much as we can provide, since we're doing a city certification, the inspectors would have one type of training or certification, like a home inspector or something to that effect. And we could also provide or refer them to other training or certification that's needed. So there might be an option to have both certifications, but that's something that we'll definitely continue to work on and talk with the climate staff, who are better suited to the kind of certifications that would be needed for that program.
Yeah. Don't take my question as not being for it. I'm totally for it because the elephant in the room when we talk about energy efficiencies, the built environment already, not the future. I just, also, just as a suggestion, because the regional priority is going to be setting up an energy efficiency program at the time of listing, which is going to require training of inspectors. I guess where I'd be is kind of wait and see what that looks like because you may have a built-in group of people who are already certified to do those energy efficiencies and see how that program looks. I don't know. Pamela probably knows better, but just because it seems like reinventing the wheel that's already being invented.
Right. And that element of it is definitely still going to be in development, but we wanted to have kind of an example for a promising model that we could share today.
I'm going to tag on that one because it was one of my questions, and that way I could just get it done. So you didn't clarify who pays for the energy audits?
That would be paid by the landlord.
And then when they come back with a requirement that certain things happen, that's also on the landlord?
Correct. Yeah. We would have some ability to pay for repairs through CDBG funds if they qualify as renting to lower-income tenants.
Okay. Thanks. Another question? Councilmember Payne?
Yes, thank you so much, Krista. I could be just getting my wires crossed here, reading the staff report, but I'm just trying to make sense of it. It says here that staff recommends requiring a third party to do inspections for five-year cycles. And then it says that the city could also consider requiring re-inspections by a city code enforcement officer. And I saw that you had your list of FTEs up there. So which of those are on the screen? And is that separate from the stanza that's talking about re-inspection code enforcement?
Yeah. The re-inspection was a suggestion from another city who provides city inspections for a fee. And they suggested that having city staff do a re-inspection might ensure that, you know, if they had to move forward with condemning a property, that they would have that code enforcement lens on it and be able to kind of confidently move forward, rather than the third-party inspector. So if we move forward with that option, the city could charge an additional re-inspection fee for that as well. But it would likely be in the code enforcement team that's completing that.
Okay. So would that be an additional FTE on top of what you have listed here? Or would that be within what's already listed?
It could be within, depending on the direction that we go with the program. So the re-inspections could be completed by a third party, in which case that wouldn't have the staffing impact. But there might be an additional staffing impact if we did go the route of having city re-inspection.
Okay. So I just want to make sure I'm clear that staff recommends using a third party, even in the case of re-inspection?
At this point, we can monitor to see if there is quality control issues or, you know, to determine the need.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Madron?
No, it's not her hand. It's the mouse's.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a hand on your face right now. And it's the mouse. Sorry. There, now it's gone. You look like the thing from Home Alone. Okay. So Mayor Protim.
Thank you. I think Dante's question kind of sets up what I was hoping you could describe a little bit more. That my understanding is that that re-inspection is if there's a lot of code violations going on, it's going to become both a code enforcement issue and a rental registration issue. And so having the ability to charge for code enforcement's time to re-inspect and to work with them, I think that's why there's both some city staff time and assuming it's little stuff, the third-party inspector could handle it just fine. And so this makes me wonder about, we had some surprising information from Lakewood when you presented to Land Use. And did you learn any more about why they had such a high rate of inspections that had correction items on them compared to what we heard from other municipalities?
Yeah. I think the best thing that I, you know, can share from what I heard from them is that they have a very high percentage of properties that were really deteriorated. And that was a key reason why they wanted to implement this program. Over half of their rental housing stock is single-family units. And so that was really, this program was really designed to identify and get those units into compliance or either not allow them to be rented out.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The one thing I wanted to add just to this conversation around resources and FTEs, I think we're going to learn a lot if council moves this forward over the first couple of years in terms of what we see, in terms of what we think those impacts are, whether or not we think we're going to need more code enforcement support, whether or not we think a third party is working just fine and is meeting the needs. And so I think as you move forward, I think there's recommendations here, and we've done our best to estimate costs for what we think this will be. But the reality is, as we move forward, and we'll have to learn a lot. I think also the ability, if we're fortunate enough to receive grants that offset some of the other FTE costs, that's going to be really helpful in terms of what we might need to do other places as well. So we'll keep our fingers crossed there. But I just wanted to add that, I mean, I think Krista, it's hard to crystal ball this in terms of what could happen and what we may need. So I think she's done a really good job of looking at other cities to say, where would we start? What's this look like? But my guess is this will evolve over time. And by the time we get to year three, my guess is we'll have a lot more data to share.
Did you have a question? Well, I guess more of a, kind of a question for someone over here. So we've applied for a grant to start this program, but you don't have approval for the program. So isn't that putting the cart before the horse?
If you'd like to, go ahead. So this program specifically was an energy efficiency grant. And we looped in the registry as being, you know, kind of, one can't happen without the other. So start up for the registry and an energy efficiency navigator position. And that navigator would help property owners. We were suggesting a pilot with affordable housing sites. So we'd partner with housing authority or other providers and make energy efficiency plans with them and then help kind of matchmake with federal rebates or other programs to help them make those improvements.
And I do want to clarify, it is a prize. It is not technically a grant. It is money out of the Department of Treasury that is just a prize.
Does it come with a bow?
Yes. There is no reporting or performance measures or anything. It is a no strings attached prize that had no really funding requirements. So we can pivot it and set it up however we like if something were to change. But it is a prize.
Okay. All right. So I'll go back to Councilmember, partially.
I'm going to try to channel Councilmember Quinn and just say, thank you, Krista. Sometimes we jump into all our questions and put you in the spotlight, and we don't bother to say thank you. And that was a very good presentation. So I just want to channel her for a moment, if that's okay. My question, I have a couple, is when I look at the estimated costs that's in the packet here for the landlords, I'm trying to understand a little bit, when I look at these, the annualized total, is that including your inspection costs annualized? Is that part of it? Just so it's not like, this is what you're annualized. But guess what? Once every five years, you also pay this. That's included in it?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. I have more. I'm going to pass it off.
Okay. I think I will. So what happens if the inspection shows repairs that require the tenant move out for like, even just like, a few days or something? Especially like hardwood floors repaired or something like that? Who pays for that?
So I think that's why I wanted to provide some information on relocation assistance policies that we could implement to offset that. But I think, you know, there can also, we can do those in addition to creative solutions with the landlord. If it's, you know, fewer than a week's time, maybe they could help offset costs of a hotel or something to that effect. I think we can, we could adapt language.
But only for low-income housing?
We could discuss that, whether that's something that should be applied to all tenants who would be displaced or whether that would fit in the same kind of definition as the relocation assistance policy with the cost-sharing program.
Okay.
I'm just curious about landlord outreach. I see in the staff report that there is a very low percentage of landlords that are actually in favor of a registry. So do we have any insight as to why, other than obviously it means they're going to be paying additional fees? But other than that, any particular reasons why they would be opposed? I mean, we could think of a few, but that you know of?
Yeah. Yeah. So last year, when there was extensive outreach to landlords and to renters, there was a series of policy proposals that they could kind of vote their support on. And this was actually maybe the second highest of all the proposals. So none of the policies had a high level of support from any landlords, except for grants for rehabilitation. And so this was pretty high up there on the proposed policies that were presented. So some of the main things are increased regulation is burdensome and additional costs and time would be a burden on the landlord.
Sure. Just want to add that out of all of our plans, our Housing Action Plan, our One Community Plan, the Assessment of Fair Housing, homelessness prevention is a key pillar in all of our strategies, and that's a really hard task for us to do. Homeless prevention is just almost impossible to track. How do we keep people in their homes? And a vast majority of people who fall into homelessness were previously renters. So this whole program is an element of homelessness prevention. It is to stabilize rent, and it is to keep people in their homes. And this is a way that we're seeing neighboring cities and thought leaders in this work address homelessness prevention. So keeping that in mind when we think of why we're doing this and the intent.
I love that intention, but most thought leaders aren't landlords. So, did you have something?
It's a two-part question, sorry. I'm going to try to get away with two in one. One part is for Jay, and the other part is for you. If we were to move forward on something, what would be the expected start time? Would it be 2024? And then the second part is, have you figured that into the budget?
Yes. So this would be starting in 2024. We would hope that we could move forward with this next year.
And the answer to your second question is yes and no. So I'm aware of this request from staff. I start my staff meetings with department directors here in two weeks to start going through all of the budget requests. This is one of them that has been submitted for consideration. As I mentioned, 2024 budget is going to be a tough one, and there's going to be a lot of competing demands. And this is one of them that we'll have to add to the list. I think we're, as I mentioned, fingers crossed on the prize. I love that, Darian, on the prize. But this will be another thing in for consideration for the full council to discuss. So as you think about moving this forward, that will get wrapped into your 2024 budget conversation as well.
Thank you, Chair of Finance. That was like, one of my first things when I started reading the packet was, okay. Because Jay's been keeping the finance committee up to date on how tight the budget will be this coming year. So, and Dante asked one of my other questions, so thank you for asking that about landlords.
Did you have anything else right now?
I do. It's just a thought that I'm just trying to figure out if we were to potentially, I know one of the other policy considerations is obviously capping late fees. So I'm just trying to understand that, obviously, the landlords are responsible for the upkeep of any particular unit. But then if you max it at $10 for a late fee on rent, obviously, they need income to make the repairs. So I'm just trying to think about, excuse me, I'm just trying to think about the full picture and whether or not it makes sense as a whole to have those two policies. So I'm just ruminating on that for a bit. I don't know if you have a response to that, but just wanted to share that.
Yeah. I think, I mean, there's a larger kind of philosophical question you might be asking. I think really what I've heard and what I've seen from tenant experiences is late fees can really run the gambit of, you know, and they can be escalating. So it could be not just once, but every day. So it compounds. And so at this point, you know, there's really not any kind of standard that caps that.
Sure.
And Krista, when we're talking about the late fee cap, it's kind of a separate conversation from the repair, right? So we're talking about someone's late with their paying their rent. Then there's a different kind of... their rent. Then there's a different kind of fee structure, and it kind of goes across the board in terms of what people are charging. And we're talking about that specific fee, if you're late on your rent. Is that right?
Correct.
So, and then, in terms of the repairs, I don't think of the discussion here is about capping the amount of money that landlords could seek, you know, if someone damages their unit and they have to make repairs. Right? I got that right?
That's correct. So I got, kind of logistics, can I go? So I did some rough math on, if you're going to start out doing 20% of our rental stock a year, it's about 3,000, you said? Minus all the affordable ones that are already taken care of, it's about 3,000. That works out to about 40 a week? How are you going to accomplish that? Where are you going to find all these inspectors to do that?
Yeah, you know, I was really surprised in talking with some of the inspectors, who were referred to me by the Kent program. And they, there was only about six inspectors on Kent's inspection list. And they were able to manage that number of rentals in Kent's community. And then, they were also doing inspections in Seattle and in other cities. So, there, there's also about 60 to 65 home, licensed home inspectors in Thurston County. So, it doesn't seem that there would be a shortage of potential inspectors to complete that work. But just given that volume, that's really why staff and the Land Use Committee went with the third-party inspection recommendation.
So, to have an inspection, if you're buying a house, it's about $500. So this, you're pretty sure that they can do this type of inspection for about $120? Is that true, Sam?
That was just based on the range of fees that, from interviews with those programs.
Okay, sure.
A difference is, when you're buying a house, you get a structural inspection and a pest inspection. So there's, there's elements that wouldn't be considered in looking at sort of basic health and safety kinds of, so it's a shorter checklist-
Absolutely.
-by quite a bit.
That's why-
And I also, being part of a community of old carpenters, I know that there's, you know, when the mortgage crash happened, there were a bunch of people who instantly got minted to either secure empty houses, or to inspect foreclosed houses. That, there was quite a bit of flexibility among trade people to respond to a new need, similarly in 2008.
Okay. That was a long time ago. Okay, and then, I'll go to Lisa. I don't want to hug the whole time.
Wow, just sort of giving a plug for Ollie Strong, that'd be a good area to start training people to, you know. But if, I see the different levels per unit. Is the staff looking at one that's their favorite? Because you got 30, 32, and 35, right? Did I get all the numbers? Is there, which one of these would the staff be leaning towards, just out of curiosity?
I think the 35 provides some buffer, because these are estimates that we've gathered with the best of our knowledge. But it does provide a little bit more buffer, and the significance for a lot of property owners of the $5 difference, might not make a huge impact.
And we were asked, we had the price range a bit wider, but we were really asked by Jay to make sure this program is able to fund itself. So providing that range to having a short deficit the first year, but once it's up and running and compliance is higher, it does fund itself in the FTE need.
Okay, and I can see that. And I'm also looking at what you expect to potential for your surplus. I'm assuming you will come up with a plan, like reserves and all these other things, that will follow through cool incentive programs and stuff like that. Thank you.
Okay, on the business license, full disclosure, I have, my husband and I have a rental property that's a fourplex, that we have Olympic Property Management taking care of us for us. And then we have a couple other single-family homes that we rent. So I speak from experience. And it was never clear that you needed a business license if you're doing long-term rentals. It was for short-term rentals. So that's, you know, really important for renters to know that, or landlords to know that. What I'm curious about is, a lot. I guess I'm just still struggling with, how do you think this is going, or what's the problem that we're trying to solve here?
I think there's a lot of different things that we're trying to address. And we're trying to add value to this program, to make it meet community needs. So, you know, education, a need I keep hearing up, hearing about, is that landlords have a really hard time keeping up with policy changes and updates and regulations. So trying to make it easier for people to understand, so they can comply. That's one side of it. Doing more proactive inspections, you know, in the long run, that's going to reduce the burden on code enforcement. It's going to preserve our housing stock. You know, having that energy efficiency piece, that lowers costs and energy bills for renters, as well as, you know, it helps the landlord with their property and to make it better. So I think we're trying to, you know, really add as much value as possible.
Yeah, and Krista completed the Assessment of Fair Housing this past year. And overwhelmingly, what came out of that is that marginalized renters are really being impacted by fair housing laws. And the first time this was completed, five years ago, it was set up more about voluntary compliance, and recommendations came out of it. And you were encouraged to incorporate them into your, into your operations. And now it is set up as a requirement. So HUD will be coming back to us yearly, and asking, what have you done to support fair housing in your community? And a lot of the recommendations that came out of our Fair Housing assessment is education, support to renters, identifying marginalized communities, and how they can stay in their homes. And this program has set that up. So we're really on track to meet a lot of our goals that were outlined in our Assessment of Fair Housing.
Aren't, aren't those populations already protected by laws that we have in place?
Correct. But the, the issue is really like, who is disproportionately impacted? So people that are more often in substandard housing, people that cannot afford other options. You know, it is a lot more daunting to make a complaint about that kind of violation. And if it's an expectation that if you rent housing, it will be habitable, that just kind of sets a general expectation for that, rather than it being incumbent on the tenant to report that to us.
What's the pathway currently for a tenant that is struggling with a landlord? Isn't there mandatory mediation in Thurston County required?
There's no mandatory mediation required for landlord tenant issues. At this point, it is voluntary, however.
Okay, okay. Lisa?
Help me with the stats. Is it 53% renters in Olympia, or is it 54? 50, I know it changed, but, okay. So I can see where this is coming from. I know we get a majority of Olympians are renters. But as a small business owner, I also worry about changes in impacts to people who are making a living. If this was to go forward, how are we going to educate our landlords, especially the small ones that are really trying to do the right thing, and be part of a solution? How is that education of this new system going to get out to them, so they're not caught unawares, and then get behind the eight ball with us, with fines and everything else? How's that going to look? Do you have a plan for that?
Yeah, I think, you know, last year, after council passed the Tenant Protection Ordinance, I worked with the GIS staff to try to identify rental housing property owners and their addresses, and then mailed out a postcard, and then provided a link with a webinar on that postcard. And so, we can use mailers to identify, you know, as many landlords as we believe could be out there. And we might cast the net too wide to start with, but to try to identify those property owners from the beginning. And then, we can also, you know, use our communications team support to get the word out via social media, and landlord associations as well. So I think, you know, it'll take some time to get the word out, and to inform people. But I think we have some good tools to be able to do that.
Yeah, and just to lay out the budget, this isn't set up to fund itself through fees or fines, because it's not a punitive setup registration. It's meant for education and support. And so our, I mean, our goal, our team's goal, is to provide a supportive and safe and healthy housing stock for people. It's not to penalize people who are, who are landlords, or are looking to have a slower pace to get, to get where they need to be. So it is not a punitive setup registration. It is for education and support.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
Councilmember Payne?
Yes, thank you, Darian, for that, that point. That's really, really important. But may I suggest, Krista, in addition to what you just stated as part of your communications and outreach, that you've already done with tenant protections, is, think about how we might engage face-to-face with people. Because, you know, getting, you know, the postcard, that's great. But they may not have heard, you know, for example, Darian's comments tonight, and all of a sudden, they just see that the city's doing this thing, and what is this? And, and so, finding out a way to engage people in person, I think, will help mitigate some of that, and getting ahead of it. I also want to say that I'm totally on board with the idea of no rent increases. It's been part of our legislative agenda over and over, you know, to request rent stabilization at the state level. Constituents are always asking us to do something, and we cannot at this level. But this seems like a tool that we might be actually able to, to use. We don't have a lot in our pocket, but this is one we might be able to do. And so, fully support that. And in addition to what it says here about, does it meet health and safety standards, I'm wondering, and this might be a question for Mark, I don't know, from a legal standpoint, but I'm, I'm wondering if we can include reasonable accommodations related to health and safety, in that, say for example, I'm a tenant in a rental unit, and I get injured in a car accident, and I need to access, you know, my home in a different way that I hadn't had to before. But yet, you're going to slap a rental increase on me, you know, out of nowhere. I'm just curious if we could include something like that in, in what this says here.
That will be something I'll look into. And the presentation tonight has raised some questions that I will have for Krista and Darian.
Can I get, ask a clarifying question to what you just said? So, why would they raise the rent? Because they need a ramp installed?
No, I'm saying that this already states here, that doesn't meet health and safety standards. And so they wouldn't be able to do that regardless. But let's, like I said, the example I provided, is that you're, you're suddenly injured, and it's been a battle for you, to get an accommodation that's reasonable for you as a tenant. And you're, it's back and forth, and you're not getting anywhere, but suddenly, you're getting a notice for rent increase. You know, I, I sort of take issue with a scenario like that. And so, I'm just curious if there is a way that we can include that.
So just to-
Yeah.
-clarify, the recent rental laws that were passed, you have to give six months' notice, correct? For a rental increase of five, more than 5%?
10%.
10% for six months?
For six months, and 120 days for five, more than 5%.
Yeah. So it wouldn't be suddenly, but that doesn't help this person that needs to, you know, be able to get into the house. So, I guess, I'm thinking, there's like, apples and oranges. There's like, this person needs a ramp, or some other kinds of ADA, you know, adaptation for the house. Is the landlord required to do that?
Typically, you know, with, for housing protections, and Washington State law against discrimination, most often, if somebody needs a modification to their unit, the tenant would typically pay for that modification, unless it's a subsidized property.
Okay. So I just want to, clarification for myself, too. Mayor Potem.
Thanks, Mayor. One thing we haven't talked about, and I think it's, it's related to some of the concerns folks have, is about what, what constitutes a house not being health or safety, healthy or safe. And I, I mean, I, I just, I think, in terms of like, the discussion about the displacement, you know, costs, all that, that if, if something has gone so wrong, that people can't live in a place, that's already a problem with the house. That's not related to our inspection, and those are situations that landlords and tenants already deal with, you know, a bigger failure of, of the housing unit. So I think we're adding an element of consistency in communication, so that everybody kind of knows what the expectation is. But we, I didn't see in the presentation where that bar is. And I think that's where some of the fear is for folks, is, you know, is this, if there's a smear of caulking on the window trim, that, you know, I'm being facetious. But, but what, what examples do you have of the items that are cited, or the kinds of items that would be included in an inspection?
Yeah, that's a great question. There's a lot of different examples that we can look at and pull from, from other cities. And, you know, some of them use like, a point system. Some of them, it's, you know, if you fail this one egregious thing, you fail. So I think that we can look at the different models, and I'd really want code enforcements kind of input on that.
And HUD has housing quality standards, that all of voucher holders are required to, to base housing standards off of. So we would start there, and then look to adapt them to what would fit, what we're looking for. But those are already federal requirements that we could base it off of. And it's not about caulk. That's totally-
Yeah, or paint colors. Councilmember Partially?
I agree with Councilmember Payne about those down under the code language. My only question is for Mark. Would that be deemed a rent cap? And, and is that the bottom one? I mean, because in this, according to our state Supreme Court and our constitution, we're not allowed to do that. Is that correct, of any kind?
As City Attorney, I take the Fifth Amendment. However, I would be happy to discuss it with you later.
Okay, thank you. I like everything I'm seeing you. Thank you for answering a lot of her questions. I'm generally in favor of it. I agree with Darian, that one of the number one causes of homelessness is not keeping people in their house. And keeping healthy houses, we all know some of them in this community that are incredibly unhealthy. Yet we need to support the really good landlords, and there's a lot of good ones out there. So, I'm assuming this would come back to council, and it's a full presentation. It'd be lovely if you could cover some of the things that we talked about, including what our Mayor Potem, I almost called you a Councilmember-
I'm only Clark.
-Clark, pointed out about, just sort of some of the things that would be deemed, so that we can take away some of the fears. And then, some of the things that are going to be done to educate our good, our landlords, and what this means. And then, statements like what Darian made, just so we get the right communication out to our community in as many ways as we can, because we know it takes more than three.
Are we good to wrap up? I just have some closing comments. Not so bright and shiny. I talked to Todd Monahan, and one more question. So I pay for property management. They inspect on turnover each unit, and make sure it's up to, you know, code and health and everything. Plus, I go in, and I fluff and puff, because I want my unit to be beautiful and sparkling shiny. Because when people move in, that's what they, you know, deserve, and that's what I expect when they're done. So I'm, I might be unique as a landlord, but I don't think so. I am a small landlord. And the, the laws that you passed, we passed at the state and locally, last year, I talked to Todd, and I said, so, anecdotally, you know, did you lose people as landlords in your program? And he said, it's not anecdotal. We looked at the, the whole program, their whole portfolio, and 10%. I know, it doesn't seem like a lot. But 10% of the accounts that they had, they sold their houses, because they just didn't want to deal with one more regulation. And I looked at this, this morning, and read it, and I just, my heart sunk. I was just like, this is, it just feels like a big swing, on, you know, to say it nicely, but- but kind of overreach in some other ways, and it feels like it's not going to achieve affordability, it's going to do the opposite. And you're going to lose housing stock, you're going to lose small landlords that just, are just overwhelmed with trying to do this. It's going to be great for property managers, because I'm just going to like, fine, just take it all, because I can't deal with all this paperwork and all this, this anxiety of making sure that everything's perfect. And I'm a good landlord, and so this isn't going to take care of the SCFOs. They're going to still be out there. They're going to not register, they're just going to be renting, and you're not going to take care of some of those ratty, raddest situations for people. I think it's just going to punish people. It feels punitive, and it feels aggressive, way more aggressive than when I sat down to talk about this with Jason and you, Krista, years ago, it seems like years ago, it was a year and a half ago, as a landlord. And I was like, if, I would support a registry if it's a service to landlords to help us navigate, to help us educate, to help us, you know, work and, and have community of landlords, so we can talk through problems with each other, and, because you feel like kind of isolated in, in this work. And so I really, really struggle with this. I think it's too much too soon. I think we just dumped a whole bunch of regulations on the housing market, and I think this is just too much too soon, and I, I can't see how it's going to make anything more affordable. So that is my, is no, no statement against your work. You guys did incredible work. You did what we asked you to do. And so I think you did an exemplary job. It's not anything about that. It's just I don't, I don't support this outcome, and I know a lot of other people that, that don't, and I don't feel like they got talked to either, so. In closing, we're going to move on to our next item, which is.
Councilmember Madrum.
I just want to make sure that Krista got what she needed from us in terms of feedback on the program, and particularly the, the, I, I don't, I didn't hear us discuss relocation assistance and give clear feedback on the next steps for that. And I, 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 I think, I think we should check in real quick, because this is the moment for her to do that, because I, I, I hear you, Cheryl, but I did hear support from other council members, so I want to make sure that she's got what she needs to move forward.
Great. That would be very helpful if you have a direction that you know you would like to go with relocation assistance, because that seems like we didn't touch on that.
And I think it might be helpful to put that particular slide back up about relocate, what, what the options were for relocation assistance, so people can have that in front of them.
I agree. Thank you, Danny. That would be wonderful.
Do you want me to quickly recap them, or, okay. So the first option is, you know, this is already required by state law, that if a property is condemned, the landlord pays relocation assistance. Really, what we're thinking about is whether, like other cities, we would say, if you don't pay within seven days, or however much the timeframe is, then the city will pay it, and you have to pay the city back. And then the second option is if a unit is not condemned, but it needs substantial repair that would require a tenant to move out, that the, the funds would be paid half by the city and half by the landlord. And that's just for the low-income tenants in this situation. And the city could decide to do both, or, you know, neither, say, the state law is good enough, or we could do a combination.
So first, this reminds me of the Angeles Hotel, because that's the first time that as a council, we had this conversation about, somebody chose to improve the unit, and, and so they ended the rental agreement with everybody who was currently in the building to, to do the rehabilitation. It wasn't an issue of repair necessarily. And, and so a, a question is, at that moment, we understood that CDBG funds could be used, and we created a, a fund, and there were a couple of others, there were some triplexes in the northeast neighborhood that had a similar story. So I'm, I'm, I'm in support of it, but I'd, I'd also like to, to be refreshed in where we ended up. I, I, I think that was just for one cycle of CDBG, that we dedicated some funds there.
Yeah, to my knowledge, that's accurate, because I, I recall when that happened. And I only know of that circumstance, but I can look into it further to see if we have any other examples of that.
Can I maybe help with how we might get here on this one? So as, as I look at item one, it, it's already a RCW, right? That says may be required to be paid. And I think the, the question that Krista's asking here on, on, just on item one is, so, and this probably needs some more legal review, so I think we're just looking tonight for some, some direction so that we can then go take a look at what the options are. Do you want to take this to a place that says, if a unit's condemned, it says "may", do you want to make, do you want to have it so that it's required? And then do you want to put a timeframe on it? Right? Those are the kind of options we're working through on number one. And if you generally want to look at some of those things, then we can go look at that. We need to talk to Mark more, and we can bring some options around that, what that might look like. On item number two, this is about whether or not you want the landlord to be solely responsible for below 50% AMI, or do you want us to look at some sort of cost-sharing program, which, as Mayor Potem said, could include looking at a CDBG option for how we might fund something like that, or another option. So I don't think for tonight, you, you need to pinpoint this down to an exact something, but if you're, would like us to keep working on those two options in that direction, that's what we, I would say we'd need tonight, because I think we need to flush out some more items here and bring something back to you can really respond to.
I'll give you my two cents. I think we should say on the top, take the "may" out of it, because if it gets condemned, it's probably going to be one of the properties that we're all knowing and thinking about. I think that seven days is a good one, or whatever amount of time, because you're, this person is suddenly out, and they're going to need money to relocate. And then having the city pay it, and then work with the landlord to get it paid back to the city, make the city take the slack instead of the person out. I like the idea of number two, cost-sharing, because we don't, we want to encourage the landlords that are good to rehabilitate their property, to get people back in, and this could be one incentive way to get them to do this, is that they're not responsible for the entire cost, and we can figure that out. Maybe some of the extra surplus money can go into a fund or something. Does that help?
Yes, agreed. That's what I was going to say. Both options, please.
Full menu. All right, we're going to move on now to the next item we have tonight, which is Olympia Strong update. And this is a program or a community outreach that emerged from the COVID-19 pandemic as we came through to an altered economic landscape, and we needed a clear understanding of barriers individuals and households face when seeking economic security. So I'm going to add an invite forward, Mike Reed and Jason Robertson, who is our consultant on this work. Update us. I almost wore my Olympia Strong T-shirt. No, they're awesome. They do what they're asked to do, and they do it well. All right?
Well, good evening, excuse me. Good evening, council. My name is Mike Reed, I'm the Economic Development Director, and we've got Jason Robertson from J. Rowe Consulting that has helped us on this project. So we will take you through our presentation. Thank you, Mayor, for sort of setting the table and introducing this. We have been working on this project for a little over a year now, and in fact, here we go, we were here doing a study session in July of 2022. And so we are tonight, in front of you, speaking about our, our first draft of the actual plan. So a couple of items that you will see in front of you before I start the presentation, just to give some context, in case you want to shuffle through some paper. We do have our draft plan here. I did provide a, a printed copy and did put copies out front as there was a glitch as it got posted, there was a formatting error. It created an additional column, and it was a little difficult to read, and some of the, the graphs were mistaken, so, or were altered. So printed copies, and public can accept, get them outside, and we will get that updated on the report. We have two appendixes associated with the report, and then you'll see these larger-colored graphics here. These are remnants of an open house that we held about a month ago on this effort, and I just thought you might find them of interest. And they are summaries of activities that we are currently underway and doing. So with that, we will start our presentation. So we started this public process to form a strategy on how the City of Olympia and its partners can best support economic strength and opportunities for our residents, our businesses, our overall community, and then the city as a whole. We recognize that we need, as an organization, appropriate funding to be able to do all the things that we need and want to be able to do to solve the growing and complex problems that our community is faced with. These up, these updates and goals will, or these updates to our economic goals and policies will be seen in our comprehensive plan. They will form our city actions and investments, and they will be the basis of the work plan for our Economic Development Department. I really do want to emphasize, though, that this work does not occur in a vacuum. There is a lot of partnership that has to take place to make sure that this moves forward. So as I mentioned, we have our first draft of the plan. So what is inside that first draft? We will not go page by page through the draft, but there are a couple of points that I do want to move into as we move down, and it'll actually be more associated with the Action Plan Matrix, or Appendix B. I do want to spend a little bit of time as a group looking at some of those potential initiatives. But inside the actual draft, it starts off with an explanation of our engagement approach. We did things very differently with this project. There was a very considerable effort to the idea of qualitative research. We wanted to hear the stories. So we started off doing quantitative analysis, looking at data, and looking at census information, and surveys, and so on and so forth. And then our engagement approach actually allowed us to hear some of those stories and test some of that raw data and analysis and deep numbers with what we've heard from our community. We then, in the, in the plan, we have a community input section. So what did we hear from them? Some of those summary findings that we heard, and then we break it into, what did we hear from individuals in our community? And then what did we hear from some of the groups, be it business associations or things of that nature? We did include into the, into the plan a component on some notable data. I think what we are trying to do with this plan is tell a story about how did we get from here to here? And it is a story about data, it's a story about meeting with people and hearing where they're at, and those two stories then lead to actions that we can take, that we think will help bend some of those curves. Then we go through our focus areas associated with what we heard. We have some progress indicators that we can look at over time to see if we are making an impact as we intended to. And then finally, there's a little bit of a comp plan nexus, as we will need to fold a lot of this information into our comprehensive plan update. So why am I here in front of you tonight? I'm really asking you two questions. Are we ready to move forward to finalizing this plan? In a sense, are we done with some of that outreach process? Have I answered the questions that you thought we would be asking as part of an economic resiliency plan? Are there more questions that may be in your mind as we've shown you the draft plan? And then secondly, do we understand what this is saying and how this kind of a plan works? It's very different than some of the other plans that we have put forward. It's, it's not a checklist. It is a plan that we can use annually to, I think, about our priorities for that year associated with some of these focus areas. It is also, it's going to potentially reframe how we communicate about certain things, certain projects, efforts, initiatives. We can use these focus areas to frame the why and the how associated with what we're doing them. So I want to make sure and sort of test, did we get that right? Would you feel comfortable, as a leader in our community, using this language to have these conversations about what we're doing? So those are, so I'm going to plant those seeded questions now, we'll get through the rest of the presentation, and then I hopefully can get some feedback from you at the end. I will do a very speedy review. I know that you know this, but I will always take the opportunity to share a little bit about how we got to where we got to. Here is our, our timeframe that we, that we have been working from. I do want to note, again, that in that first yellow area, that city profile, which was one of the deliverables, Jason did an incredible amount of work on that, on, that is our quantitative analysis. That's all of the data. So we poured through all sorts of different pieces associated with that. And then as we moved into the orange and the blue, I guess that's what that color is, that's when we start doing the qualitative and the, the storytelling, and using those two pieces together to help us move forward. We are now in purple, and we are moving towards the implementation. I want to stress, this is not the kind of plan that you will do everything at once. There's not the kind of budget necessary to do that, nor strategically would it even make sense. You need to take some bites on these things, test them, see how they work, make a determination as to, is this program having the intended outcome that we want? Should we continue it, expand it, alter it? We've even had to do that with some of our, our, our own programs. We have made modifications, for example, to the Olympia Career Hub, one of our projects. It's deeply rooted in this. We've had to adapt it a little bit over the course of the year to really meet the need. So that's how you use a plan like this. So I do want to do a little bit on some of the data, or I'm not going to go through everything in it, but what was, I think, a really telling piece for us when we started into that data profile was the impacts of poverty. This plan is much different coming out than we or I thought it was going in. I thought it would be a very sort of traditional economic development strategy. And what we found, in a lot of ways, this is associated with a poverty reduction plan. There's a lot of pieces that tap into that space. It is not, it actually, let me say this in the positive, it recognizes that trickle-down economics are a failure. It doesn't work. It doesn't work like that anymore. The idea that if we can get really wealthy at the top, then those wages come down, and those benefits come down to the bottom, and everything will sort of work that way, it hasn't worked, and it never did, and, and it's not working. And so this really is a bottom-up economic development strategy. How do we, how do we fill in the cracks? How do we strengthen from our core and move upwards? And what we found is that really a third of all of our community members inside of Olympia really needs some help like this. So a couple of things, too, on that poverty piece. This one was, I think, a big eye-opener for us, and it also helps us think about how we cater certain kinds of programming. And this is, again, an example about how over a decade, you may move something and figure you may need to recalibrate that. So as an example, female head of household with. So as an example, female head of household with no spouse present, um, that, um, that has less than a high school graduation, fifty graduate, uh, degree, 57% of those are living below the poverty line. And the poverty line, let's be honest, that's really in poverty. Even at high school graduate, um, single moms or female heads of households, um, 42% even with just a high school graduation. I also wanted to point out one of the data points that we saw, um, it's in the Olympia Strong. I don't have a slide for it, but we are seeing pretty significant declines in the FAFSA completion rate for the Olympia School District. And you can see it in the report there. Uh, in the last five years, it's gone down about close to 10%. Um, and those
Can you explain what the FAFSA is?
FAFSA is the
Free Application for Financial Student
Yes. Um, thank you. Um, so I think it was as high as, um, uh, over 65% and now it is below, it's below 55. The biggest declines actually started happening before COVID, and COVID hasn't obviously helped with that either. But we can tell if we have data like this and declining, um, FAFSA completion rates, coupled with, um, strong needs in, um, trades and professional certifications, maybe there's work to be done in this space. And who should we target that kind of work to? Where are those gaps? And that's ultimately what we worked on to be able to address those types of things. Here's another one, um, and you heard a little bit of this piece referenced in your previous presentation, but our homeowners and renters are facing separate economic realities, and that is just a fact, and we heard it, uh, pretty loud and clear when we were doing that qualitative research. But they, they mirror each other. I think the big one on this very obviously is that homeowners, when you asked, did you have any of these problems? Difficulty buying food, you lost income, you had trouble making rent or utility payments? 72% said, I didn't have any of those problems, whereas 65% of all renters said that. So 45% of all renters said they had difficulty, um, in this past year buying food. Pretty, pretty stark difference comparatively when you look at those two. So back to that qualitative piece, and, uh, this is the big nod to Amy Buckler, who is here in, 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 in our spirit, uh, as she's down in Centralia saving the world there. Um, a, a big nod, uh, again, Amy Buckler, this is a huge piece of her work. Uh, I was so lucky to have her on this. But, um, here's our public engagement. Appendix, um, number, or appendix A is a summary, uh, a little bit deeper of all of that information as well. You can see we did a lot. Um, we were everywhere and talked to everyone, uh, I think as best we possibly could. I will say one thing on this though, um, because we did this different and we talked to different people in different ways, we heard things that we haven't heard before. We had people asking for help in different ways. Um, and that's why some of the things that we have aren't funded, because we've never had to do these things before, because we heard from people we've never talked to before. So that's what happens when you get into areas that you haven't been before. It does get uncomfortable and you find out that, oops, we've got some gaps in certain One of those, and that biggest issue that we heard so loud and clear is, um, associated with affordable housing, and it's our top economic issue. Fifty percent, 58% of all of our survey respondents indicated that, um, affordable housing should be our number one economic goal. I will tell you, um, our businesses don't disagree with that either. Um, in the, uh, informa, or in the conversations that we had with large employers and some of our industry sector leads, uh, they're hearing it from their employees too. It is hard to afford housing in Olympia, and they're seeing more and more of their good employees living farther and farther away, especially if the objective is to become a homeowner. So what do we hear from a summary standpoint associated with, um, the needs that we heard? So closing the equity gap, um, there's some data in the final plan that does show, uh, people of marginalized backgrounds are facing, uh, a, a different economic picture than others. There is disparity and there is an equity gap in our community. And both the quantitative and qualitative data show that and back that up. They wanted us to boost affordable housing and homeownership. They want us to elevate more people out of poverty. Uh, they wanted to champion youth. We heard that one a lot. Um, there is a concern that, um, uh, it is growing harder and harder on our young folks. Um, and I don't think that that's unique to Olympia, but we are definitely feeling it here and the idea of finding tools and opportunities there to address that. The idea of cultivating career pathways, um, pretty strongly emerged. Supporting entrepreneurship, small business, large employers and industry sectors, and then finally fostering community vitality. So again, we recognize we are not starting from scratch. Many of these initiatives are already underway. Um, and the, the color documents that you've got here, these big fancy ones that you have, um, they, they list everything that we're already doing, um, in those four focus areas. It is a good read. It is enlightening. It is hopeful. We are doing a lot in this community, and we heard that. Uh, I think there is some recognition there. I will say it's difficult in the sense that a lot of what we're doing, we're doing with COVID relief funds that run dry at some point in time. So that's a little challenging. What we also heard though, is that there may be a low public knowledge about a lot of the existing programs. There's a lot of stuff out there, lot of relief, a lot of opportunities, a lot of resources, a lot of connections to various local nonprofits and associations and businesses that can provide assistance and do provide assistance, but people may not be aware of. Um, and I think a lot of what we heard on that was, if I'm in crisis, don't talk to me about much of anything unless you can help solve my crisis. The idea of talking to people about career pathways when they are about to have their power turned off is a really hard conversation to have, and it's hard to get their attention. We also recognize that even in all the great things that we are doing, there still are gaps. Um, and particularly those are associated with people that may face higher barriers. So looking ahead, Olympia Strong is a people-centered economic development plan. I do not put in here that there's some magic bullet company that we're going to recruit here and it's going to solve all of our problems. It's about our people here in Olympia and helping our people solve some of their challenges will help solve some of our challenges. So, um, it's about improving the quality of life for our people in our community. It's about facilitating pathways to economic security for our residents. It's about tracking and industry, uh, industry and job trends so that we know where those opportunities are to navigate people to. It's about supporting local businesses because they are made up of the people that, um, and they provide our tax base to support our goals. And finally, it's investing in vibrancy and resiliency projects. We heard very clear that, um, choice, I can work anywhere now. So many people were saying, I choose to live here. I may work because of telework somewhere else. So ensuring that you have the livability that makes it so that you're a destination for people that want to stay here and retain that talent became, um, very critically important due to that untethering between where we work and where we live associated with teleworking. So we have our, um, focus areas that have a makeup of draft initiatives. Those initiatives, we sort of looked at as a 10-year time horizon for doing those types of things. They are a mix of continuing and new efforts designed to fill some of the gaps that we saw. They are also a mix of programmatic and capital investment. So some are pro, progress, programs or projects that we may do one time or two times with a partner in a scope of work-like contract, um, and others may be a very specific capital investment. Buy this piece of property or land bank this piece of pop, property or what, whatever. We organize them into four focus areas. Um, those four focus areas are education and workforce pathways, housing incentive security, business enterprise, resources and support, community pride, lovability and resiliency. And again, most of those actions will be driven by our partner organizations. And who are those partner organizations? Well, this, I, I, and I will guarantee you I missed one. Um, and this is a pretty long list, but obviously the Economic Development Council, Enterprise for Equity, the Chamber of Commerce, PACC, Mountain, educate, our educational partners play a very large role in accomplishing a lot of this work. SPSCC, uh, Evergreen, our school district, uh, the Olympia School District. We have a host of nonprofits or not-for-profits that, that do and provide work in this space. This is where I know I, I missed a ton, but I, it would have been an awkward, um, slide if I tried to fit everybody. Uh, we know the Experience Olympian Beyond, the Timberland Library, the Olympia Downtown Alliance, and I put cultural organizations in this, and that's a broad one. But to accomplish this work, and you can see it in that appendix A associated with our public engagement, we met with a lot of different cultural organizations, and they want to help tell this story, and they want to be a part of this conversation. And the last thing that we want to do is simply go to them and say, tell us all of the things that you need help with, and then we stop talking to them. There's engagement that's needed after, and they need to be a part of the implementation associated with some of this work as well. So with that point, um, I am going to move to the document that you have. Where is it? This is what we call the Action Matrix, and it is a list of all the initiatives. And so I do want to take a little bit of time as we go through this, and you can ask questions on these pieces as they come up, um, or we can save everything till the end. It doesn't
You're okay with questions?
I'm absolutely okay with questions. And I think actually on the initiatives piece, it actually makes some sense. So on this first one, we talk about education, workforce pathways is our first one. Our vision is that every Olympian is afforded quality lifelong educational opportunities that build pathways to upward mobility and financial stability. I would also say, and you see it in the staff report, we identified a series of community benefits that we're aiming to achieve by doing this. Those community benefits are an increased sense of hope and self-reliance, a decrease in the equity gap, an interruption of poverty cycle, activation of 100% of our workforce potential, and a decreased reliance on some of our social service networks. So if we look on that, we can see, um, the types of initiatives that we have and the way that we've laid this out. So we've got keywords on the far left. We named the initiative. We have a city department and its role, um, in that, and then we have a partner. There's going to be some things where the project, it's a partner that should be leading it, and we play a simple support role. Um, and sometimes it will be a project that we will need to lead and bring partners along. Um, we do, we did do some analysis to see if there could be, um, nexus to other plans or other programs out there, such as our One Community Plan. So there's times where we see this overlap with hu, the Housing Action Plan, or, um, even in some instances, we could see crossover with, um, reimagining public safety in some areas. We could see it crossing over with the downtown strategy. So I look at it as the more of these plans that have already been, um, vetted and adopted, we start checking a lot of those boxes. Uh, I think they start moving up from a priority line. I left the timeline blank for now because I didn't want to make some, I didn't want to make assumptions on the implementation until I had some reaction to, from you about, do we have these right? So let's just take a quick look. I'm not putting all of these up on the screen.
Can I just add one thing?
Yes.
So you also, one of the things you left off, because you and I talked about this, is the kind of the cost estimates.
That's right.
And, and part of that is, is in terms of timeline and cost estimates, we wanted you to be able to see these and talk about these without a lens that might cause you to say, well, that might cost too much, let's skip it. So we can get reaction more about what you feel about these, because I think there's going to be a lot more work that's going to be needed on some of the cost estimates. So I, Mike, you want to add to that?
No, that's precisely the case. Thank you.
You got one more question over here?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Mike. The, the one thing that I'm thinking about going into this is, I, I don't know how you made this list if you were thinking about, um, sort of the low-hanging fruit. I mean, that's what I'm thinking about is what could make a substantial impact that's going to help people now?
Yeah.
Um, so that's what I'm thinking about as I like, look at this list.
So the list and these types of actions, and Jason, I would encourage you to chime in if, if you want as well, um, they were really created through those convers, those, a lot of those qualitative conversations. I mean, it was those conversations through public outreach and engagement to say, what's going on? And what are the kinds of things that would help? And as we started to bring those forward and start synthesizing all of that feedback, we start placing them into bunches and start seeing trends kind of emerge, you know? And that's what you see on that key words. We heard a lot of things like, um, training and youth councils and, um, various things like that. And then we started testing some of those, um, concepts. The last two public open houses that we have had, um, we shared these. Um, we've actually put this content out via survey as well. And so we've even been getting feedback from, from folks about these. People's opinions of them, um, are, are, a, a lot of, we like all of them. I wish, we wish you could do all of this stuff. If this is all important, how do I, how do I pick, you know? None of this doesn't sound important. Um, some of it, um, we start seeing it, it elevate. Um, and so that's where I think moving the timeline piece and hearing from you, we're going to think about that, but yeah.
I think, um, what I wanted to note is that there are some low-hanging fruit actions in that we, when we put the timeline back in, assuming you say move forward, we will identify those in the near term. Um, Mike's going to talk about some things that we can do next year. And then some of these things we're implementing real time. Um, I wanted to go back. Mike mentioned the FAFSA completion rate declining. We actually did some research and, um, are doing a pilot project, uh, under United Ways Coordination with the navigators, and they're in Yelm and Northeastern High School. And the one in Yelm has been there a full year, and their, um, FAFSA rates are increasing dramatically upward. And so we want to bring that to Olympia as well. Um, and there's some other ones that I can tell you about later.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Um, I've heard this before, so maybe I'm jumping at the punchline, but I, one of the low-hanging fruits, I think, is also getting another person in our Economic Development Department, maybe two more, because some of this that is not going to be partner-driven or even is, could be grant-driven, uh, you're working through the state funds, the infrastructure, the inflation bill, but we need the staff to be able to get some of that. I'm just throwing that out there, and maybe this, sort of when I see this, I'm like, that's a lot for a one-person department, and it's probably even a lot for two-person.
Uh, I will say we will be replacing Amy Buckler's position. Capacity is going to be a constraint, but it's a constraint that I will tell you as a staff person, um, a lot of my peers here. I mean, we're, we, uh, we should be very proud as a city, but we do a lot. And, and that's, that's, as, as Jay mentioned, um, we will be moving into budget process. Um, and that's where we are going to have to start setting out some of these priorities and figuring out how to do this. But yes, uh, to try to do all of this on a condensed timeframe would be difficult for one or two people. That's why, um, leaning on your partners, um, and investing into your partners, uh, becomes so critically important. They can have the bandwidth. If we're willing to cede some of that control on how to execute to some of the partners and invest in them to do the work, there could be better ways, um, that, that don't mean adding FTE all the time. So, um, a thought there. So
Can I just, I know there's so many thoughts going through, um, but when I see this navigator for the Olympia High Schools, um, they have their own career counseling departments. That's their job. Why are we bringing something else to that?
Um, so, so does every other school where we're piloting it, and we thought at first they'd be resistant to sending in some, someone, but who are sending in our first gen graduates who are young and, um, people of color, and they're going out and finding these kids instead of waiting for them to come of waiting for them to come to a session, and they're actively supporting them and telling them what's possible. A lot of these kids have never even imagined what they could do. And so it's just, it, they recognize themselves in the people that are serving them.
That, that's what I needed to hear.
And the counselors are grateful because they can't get through 500 kids.
Exactly.
In any meaningful way.
Absolutely. And I hope that there's a strong focus on, not necessarily a FAFSA where you need to go to a four-year school, but career training that's, yeah.
They teach them how to, if they want to enlist in the military, or they want to go to a trade school. And SPSCC pays part of it because a lot of them choose SPSCC.
Lovely. Thank you.
The current funding for that program is a partnership between the United Way and SPSCC, and there may be some additional grant in that.
And the school district.
And the school district. So I think, you know, what we're saying is, we should find a way to get in the game to get something like that to Olympia School District. But just very quickly, some, some very quick highlights, or examples to help maybe illustrate what we mean by education workforce pathways. So we're already doing some of these. So you, we know that they, that they have an impact. Our Career Hub that we've been doing, that picture on the top, that was our first graduating class. Some of you have been to some of those graduations. On the bottom there, we've got our Journey to Jobs programs. These are the types of programs that what I would talk about when we're talking about that education workforce pathways. They are also deeply tied into our One Community Plan. So if you pull, this is an excerpt from our One Community Plan. This is the first time, really, that we got deep into talking about workforce development as a city. For the most part, the city has not been strongly involved in workforce development. But it was in the One Community Plan, we talked about prioritizing pathways to economic opportunity, increase education and training resources, and development economics strategy to address all income levels. So we have said this stuff in other places, and we used these programs to start that work. Also, as you see here, support programs that introduce youth to a wider variety of career options and employers. So part of the Career Hub, we did have different employers going to Olympia High School, Capital High School, and Avanti to introduce different careers. And as Jason mentioned, and we talked about that United Way Fund program. So I'll stop there. We can take a look at the initiative matrix. And I just want to pause for a little bit, allow you to take a look at it and ask questions that may come up about the different initiatives. I, I'm not going to put them on the screen and go through each one, but I did want to allow you some time to take a look at those and ask questions if you're looking at something going, I, that, that doesn't make sense to me.
I love, I love that you put the partner that you, you expect or, or is already, I think that's fantastic, leveraging partnership.
Yeah. And I want to, I want to caution on that, too. We may missed, we may have missed potential partners. So this isn't carved in stone. These are the partners that we are currently aware of. But I would love to even potentially add other partners as it makes sense. You know, the various cultural organizations that we talked about may be excellent in partnering on some of this work to meet specific demographics and targets.
And these organ, the partners are aware that they're on the sheet, by the way. We reached out to them before we put them on.
These are known, willing collaborators.
Could you speak for just a moment to, I'm thinking back to the COVID time, Thirst and Strong work that you did, that was a lot of facilitating and convening.
Yeah.
And I'm, like, I'm thinking, I don't know that the city directly needs to help facilitate navigators with OSD, but that you might be the matchmaker between the ESD, OSD, PAC Mountain, whoever all the folks are that would jump in with United Way to make that happen. So could you just talk about which of these you think the city is a, is a full-on partner, and which of these you're trying to facilitate or matchmake to bring them in?
Yeah. So you can see the way that we've laid this out. It will say, Partners Enroll. And so you will see, like, for example, the Career Hub, we will identify the Chamber Work Division as the lead associated with that work. Economic Development, the City Department will play a support role. You can also see then, you have PAC Mountain, ESD 113 Maker Space, and SPSCC, all being partners in a potential piece like that. So if we look at that Navigator one as an example, which one was that?
Second page.
Second page. Continue. There it is. United Way has been the lead entity on that program. The Olympia School District playing that sort of second, sort of lead partner role. The way that I would want to, for us to be involved in that conversation is not simply to just draft a scope of work to the United Way and say, hey, there's navigators in this, see you later. We're developing a youth council. That should be a way that a program like that Navigator program would be working with. Our youth council, understanding where some of those gaps are, we're working with some of the employers in our area to understand how can we engage employers into these conversations and build in various trades and things of that nature. So I think the concept of the city playing that convener role will always, I think that we, I think that's a good place. We don't have to sit at the head of the table. But if we can use the table or set the table, and then grant the head to, of the table to someone else, that, that, that will work well in our favor. And so we, we look to do that a lot in this plan.
There's, there's an important nuance I want to point out. So Mike said this plan is different. Traditionally, someone would say, that's not the city's role, cut it out. But what we're hearing out of the community, half of this stuff is things that we're already doing. And so we told the people, you know, good public engagement is to listen to people and then show them what you heard. And so we wanted to keep things in here that they were asking for, even if we're not the ones leading it. And so that's the nuance.
Did I answer? Okay. Okay. Unless there's any questions on those initiatives, and I will also say, you're more than welcome to come back to me.
Just one tiny thing, and that's, I was glad to see apprenticeship utilization as the last item.
Yes.
And we have had that on the books, but it's had a very high dollar threshold. So it applied to the bridge, it applied to the City Hall construction, and it's mentioned in the Percival Landing request for qualifications.
Yeah.
So what the conversation might be to either lower the dollar threshold, so it covers more projects, or to increase the apprenticeship requirement. But just, just the good news that there was already some work done on that.
We caught it. Yeah.
Just on that, I caught that one, too. Lot already does that. You should look at what they're doing.
And the Port passed a new one, maybe two years ago, as well.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move to the second one. This is Housing Sense of Security, Housing and Sense of Security. And again, our vision on this one is that all Olympians are able to enter and sustain stable housing while building household financial security. And our community benefits that we're looking for in that one is that people who work in Olympia can afford to live here. Housing is affordable for lower-income households and first-time homebuyers. We want to increase generational wealth building through homeownership and affordable rental options. Employer confidence that workers can access affordable workforce housing. We want more residents to be able to afford personal growth opportunities and improvement in other attendant indicators like law enforcement interaction, food security, health outcomes. So those are the kinds of desired outcomes we are looking for when we do this kind of work. Again, we are doing a lot already in this space, and there is plans for things that we are doing in this space. I think one of the things that we heard as one of the larger pieces that has been most successful for us is this land banking role that we have been playing. So we have a series of projects underway right now because the city had land that we could use to leverage in and get affordable housing. It's how we got 20, it's how we got Unity Commons, Franz Anderson, the Quint Street Village, Plum Street Village, Griswold, which is moving forward, the development that's occurring on the former mitigation site. These were all properties that we either intentionally purposed, or we had in some form or another surplus. That has been an incredibly powerful tool, and we are seeing a pretty high volume of units that will be coming online because of the role that we have played in that. What we don't really have is a strategy for how to replenish the fund over time to be able to continue to do that role. We've been using economic development resource, reserves, we've been using ARPA dollars and things of that nature. And it's, and we've been opportunity-driven when we've been able to do that. But there's very little doubt in my mind that it's going to be something that we should continue to do over the next decade. The other exciting one moving forward is taking one of the things that we have started and looking at converting it to meet a multitude of needs. So this idea of converting Plum Street Village into more of a workforce-based housing. So how do we create cohorts of people that are living together, that are all going through workforce training at the Career Hub together, or through SPSCC, or they've, they've gotten together? We think that, we feel pretty confident that if you're getting a group of cohorts that are living together and achieving that, that journey to a job, that the success rate will be higher, and we'll start seeing some positive exits as they're rebuilding some of those workforce skills. How do we get them paid while they're taking on an internship, or going to school, or going through these various programs? And we're, we're, we're moving towards that model with Plum Street. What we've, again, what we've done with Boulevard, I miss Boulevard in my list of things that we've done with our land banking. Boulevard, Franz An, I know. Again, th, this has been a very big highlight for us. And then finally, incentivizing the conversion of vacant office buildings into housing is a really strong and emerging conversation for us. And we've got the Housing Lab project that we've been working on, doing there. So those are examples of things that we are already doing. And on the list, you can see more types of efforts that can be done to advance that work. So I will pause, allow you to scan and read over, and answer questions that you may have.
The, the top one, the Universal Basic Income Pilot Project. So is that, that implies there might be a project already going? Is that correct?
Yeah. So there's, the state is piloting a program called Economic Security for All. And essentially, they've allocated funds through the workforce councils across the reg, the different regions of the state. And they're experimenting with, it's, it's basically a universal basic income for a small subset of people. And it's supplemental to other things that they're doing, workforce training, going back to school, but getting people on track for, for sustaining themselves with this help for a couple of years along the way. And so we've, I've talked to Employment Security and about other options we could do. Returning students, people who need to change career pathways, COVID messed up their, their job in food service or whatever, and they, they can't really afford to get out of the, the work game, to go back to school, to get back on a sustainable trajectory. But with this employment security, they can make rent, buy food, stay in school, transition. The other way we're looking at it is through, the mayor saw Ginny Burton, she does, she has a program where she, she greets people in prison about six weeks before they get out who are drug addicted, which is why they keep going back like she did. She has the lived experience. And she, she, they have a portable number that connects them with their care providers. And then when they get out, let's say we put them in Plum Village, they stay with them for the course of a year till they're back on their feet, driver's license, all the thing, all the steps. And so a supplemental income for those types of people helps reduce recidivism. So that's the concept.
I will also add one thing that you will notice here, too.
Mike?
Thank you. One thing that you will also notice is, in this particular one, specifically, economic development, me, in my department, isn't the staff lead on a lot of these projects. So this is not, when we talk about this being an economic development project or an economic development plan, it is woven into a lot of other departments. You will see housing, obviously, in this, but you'll also see CP and D, you'll see Public Works, that they will need to play a role in implementing a lot of this work. You know, one that I think is a heavy lift, and I just, we need to, to call it out, and if we're going to do it, we're going to need to appropriately provide the resources to do it. But this involve a collaborative interdepartmental team to conduct a comprehensive review of city policies, fees, and development regulations to identify viable options with a goal to make it easier to build and reduce overall housing costs in balance with other goals and priorities. It's mouthful, but what we're basically saying is, have we done things over the course of time that have compounded and made things maybe a little bit more difficult here than we needed to? And how do we undo those or examine those? And some of them are woven so deep into, into development code and zoning code and regulation that it's not the easiest spider web to untangle. So.
Leonard's got it.
So with that, I, further questions on, on this initiative list?
Never mind. I mean, this is the area I think we're all most, the most familiar with.
Sure.
Because we've been working on it for years and years and years.
Okay.
So this all looks very, very succinct, but familiar.
Good. It should. The next is the Business Enterprise and Resource Support. So our vision for that is that all Olympia businesses and entrepreneurs are able to access investment capital and world-class training and technical assistance in a supportive environment that celebrates and promotes their success. What we're really looking for in that, and the community benefit that we're aiming to achieve, is that we want to be able to grow efforts with new existing partner organizations to build more, a more inclusive economy. We want to ensure that newly-formed businesses have access to workforce training and employment services. We want to facilitate access to capital for aspiring entrepreneurs. We want a further community priority to stimulate, furthest community priority to stimulate local independent employers and businesses. And we want to create new revenue, new avenues to business ownership and prosperity for employees. So what does that look like? Again, we're doing stuff in this space already. The very strong scale-up, tune-up type programs, those technical assistance programs fall squarely into this kind of work. So continuing to do those. We saw programs in COVID that were new, that we hadn't seen before, that was, really was access to capital. There were grants, larger grants, to entrepreneurs from underbanked or underrepresented populations. There was a Target Zone Grant that targeted a census tracts of, of higher poverty rate. And there was effectively like a business competition, a business plan competition, and those were awarded $100,000 grant to launch their business. And 10 of those were awarded. I think five or six of those were in Olympia. We look at ideas of standing up a Navigator pilot in tar, in those target zones. How do we get an expert at like the EDC or the Small Business Development Center to go into those neighborhoods where we may have a higher population of entrepreneurial thought that never has heard about accessing programs to these? So again, meet people where they're at. And then finally, we do an incredible program with Olympia, the Ole Wahoo, our summer camp program. But what we heard during our outreach about childcare, it was overwhelming. And it's very difficult, because after all of our analysis and trying to think about what could be done at a city level, to move a needle on the childcare crisis in America, it feels over our head. And ultimately, that's kind of where we landed. There is not a strong set of actions that we felt at a very specifically local level that we could really do to have long-term impact. So what are some of the things that are in our control that we could do? So we put in as, as an example, could we expand our Ole Wahoo summer camp programs to have more slots, have more spots for low-income families to be able to do that? I will tell you, as a parent that has kids in that program, the phone lines open at 8:00 in the morning on a Saturday morning. And if you call at 8:05, like I did this time, you will be put on a waiting list and be lucky to be able to get your kids into one of the weekly summer camps. They fill up that fast. So that's something that it feels like it's in more of our control to be able to extend, expand an existing program. So with that, we can look at the Business Enterprise. So with that, we can look at the business enterprise, um, resources. And again, you'll see for a, a lot of this, I like the model of investing into our partners to do the work that our partners are good at, as opposed to me trying to create a new program in household cloth. We know that there's external programs that work. We may need to increase our partnership with those programs.
I've seen this, uh, presentation and it's, it's always struck me as the childcare solutions is something that really should be high on our legislative agenda because we're going to need state help and state capital to get our partners the money they need and to get the legislation that will help us move that forward. I'm just.
You're sneaky. You cut up, uh, a little bit of my thunder on this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The last thing I will cover is, uh, some of our legislative advocacy list. No, you're good.
Cause I've, I've seen.
I want you to know that, that Councilwoman Partially is spot on. There are things that the best thing that we can do is to advocate. So. Further questions? And we'll go to the last, um, the, the last focus areas, community, lovability, pride, and resiliency. Our vision is that Olympia is safe, resilient, and welcoming city with strong inclusive support, uh, networks, and abundant community character. What we're ultimately trying to measure as the community benefit in this is we want in, uh, increases in pride in our community, hope and a sense of place. I, I, I'm going to add a little commentary to that one. Doing this kind of outreach with the COVID hangover, significant inflation, um, global disruption, political discord, uh, it was hard at times. Like it was emotionally hard at times. Uh, you heard people that were really lacking hope, that were losing a sense of pride in the community, that felt, um, they felt lost. And, uh, I see so much of our role, the best that we can do it is focusing on rebuilding civic pride, rebuilding sense of hope, building that sense of place and sense of community. It was a powerful thing, again, not something I anticipated in an economic development plan starting out, but that us leading with a hopeful message, um, really became a critical piece. And, um, so another, uh, another things to measure in that, uh, increase the city's desirability as a hometown visitor destination and place to do business, increases tax and business revenue for tourism in vital urban centers, improves emergency response preparedness and capacity, and ensures, uh, sustained focus on infrastructure capacity and climate adaptation. I do want to note something. We have been asked questions at times on, there's this bullet on increasing tax and business revenue from tourism. Um, at times I get criticized or asked the que- a critical question of, should we really be wanting to increase tourism? Should, are tourism jobs worthy of trying to increase? And I want to be, make it really clear, the folks that work, what, what we hear, what the, the, the message in between the lines is those that work in hospitality, there's a low-wage jobs and maybe we don't want those kinds of jobs. To me, that's really an uncomfortable statement. What we find is that people that work in those jobs, English is a second language. It's a skill that's transferable from wherever they came here from, and it is a stepping stone into the workforce. It's not something that we want someone to start, but we do need to have the kinds of jobs that allow someone to enter into the workforce and proceed from there. If you start cutting out those kinds of jobs, it does become critical, so, or, or does become very difficult. I think that, um, so it's a, we are, we have to look at all sectors. And I don't look at, um, uh, there, I don't want to job shame because someone is, is, is working in a job that meets the skillset that they have at that time and we need, we need those, so.
And we need youth employ- employment.
And youth employment is important, absolutely. So, uh, that was one of the, some of the feedback that we've been getting as we've tested that, uh, tested this. So, um, I will stop and let you take a look at, um, some of these various initiatives that we have here.
Well, I'll also add, a lot of the small independent businesses that exist in Olympia don't make it with just local spending, right? That visitor spending is what turns them into the black from the red.
Correct.
Well, this is my favorite section, no surprise. So I'll chat just a little bit about pride, lovability, and resiliency. Um, so the creative economy, I'm glad you put that number one. And I think that we've done a really good job in the last six years, especially, um, putting that as a focus. And it does include tourism and treating our visitors well. Um, I am a strong proponent of tourism and, uh, whether it's, you know, to visit here for recreational purposes or just to, um, you know, our local culture and such, uh, for our events, um, those people, they come into our town, they leave a significant amount of money behind, and then they go back to their houses. And so we don't have to house them unless they're staying in a hotel, which we collect lodging tax from. So it's just, I think it's a wonderful, um, little sub-eco system that we have around being a state capital and embracing that and making people feel, um, you know, really, really welcome and, um, and appreciated when they're here. So that's all I got to say.
One of the, um, the things I've thought about, uh, with this is, I'm going to make sure I didn't jump ahead.
No, you're good.
Yeah, hold that there. Um, is, you know, and maybe it's in light of the survey, right? And our communicating all the things we are doing and all the things that are happening in our community that should bring a sense of pride and hope. I don't, I guess what I'm not seeing here is a conversation about communication to our community to help them bring pride back in our community.
Yeah, I think, uh, that's a good, that's a good point. Um, we do have things like explore and identify community pride-building events, programs, and other features. I think that what we really should be saying is maybe even expanding on that from, into just communicating hopeful content.
Well, I mean, all the housing work we're doing, and you just put up some great slides about all the, the land banking work we've done and how hopeful that is, how the, you know, just that kind of communication to help people understand that.
That's great.
Work is happening and you, you should be proud of Olympia.
Perfect.
Um, the one thing that sticks out to me is I look at the top and it says focus area, community pride, lovability, and resiliency. And I think a, a big, big part of bringing that about is literally one word that we talk about all the time, belonging. So how do we create a space in all of these categories where people feel like they belong here, which I believe will ultimately bring about that sense of community pride because people, um, feel that this place belongs to them in a very deeply personal way?
Ding 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 ding.
Yep.
Inspire Olympia.
Yes.
Will be creating public events. That's the, its whole goal is public benefit. And there's going to be three million dollars a year, starting next year, going out into these nonprofits that are going to create dozens and dozens of events for people to come into our city and for free and enjoy being here.
I, I like the belonging as a word. That, in some ways, um, you know, we've been drafting this plan, this draft that we have, that you have in front of you over the last year. And we've really seen belonging emerge recently as, as a word that is very important to us. So this again is, we're in draft form. It will not look, uh, it will have a higher polish to this. And I do, we are still at a phase where we can add word choice. And I think that belonging is a powerful word to start finding ways to include into the document, uh, that does, um, it, there's a glue, uh, between the four focus areas that, that is belonging. Okay.
Oh, and a visitor's center.
Oh, hey, no. Okay. Uh, and then you will just see, there is a piece on the bottom that, uh, on the very last page of this, um, legislative advocacy list, these were areas that we heard things, again, they're not going to be definitively in our control. Higher Medicaid reimbursement rate as a part of our legislative agenda, we heard that from, um, our medical sector outreach that, um, it is just getting, with what Medicare reimbursements are right now, it's getting very hard to serve the kinds of people that need to be served. And it hasn't increased in 20 years. Again, not necessarily a city action, but it has pretty significant city impact. Uh, multifamily home ownership, uh, uh, options, um, we've started to explore those, but what are more tools that could be provided from a legislative, uh, scenario to add to those? Uh, childcare solutions, you see that, and then mental health facilities. Um, and I would include in that drug treatment facilities as part of that as well. So, um, those were very clear sort of, um, additional advocacy pieces.
I would, I would throw, okay, cause I'm a broker record, um, the 1% property tax cap, because that will help with housing, it will help with our land banking, it will help with your budget, will help with so many aspects of so many plans.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments on that piece? I'm almost, I'll wrap up in just a, uh, so, um, oh, I should have shared those earlier. You, you got it. Um, monitoring impact, so these are some of the areas that we think that in each of these focus areas that we can, we've, we've already started looking at things like these. Um, and some of these data points were pieces that we use to build this plan, creating a dashboard or a monitoring sheet that we can do annually, uh, on a lot of these to, to see where we're, where we're working. So you can see on education and workforce pathways, things like workforce participation rate by various demographic cohorts, FASA completion rate, as we talked about, educational attainment by different demographic cohorts. We should be looking at those as an annual basis as we are doing this work. It's going to, some of those are going to be very lagging in terms of their impact. But if this is a 10-year commitment to do this work, it should be pretty clear by the end of a decade of doing this work, we've made an impact. Um, housing and census security, the number of housing units permitted annually, period. Uh, we know there's what we need to have and what we're actually getting. And then we need to start thinking about all the ways to lift that, that potential number. I won't read all of these to you. I do think though that, um, the community pride and lovability, resiliency, there's an interesting piece here. We have made three incredibly significant investments in terms of that sense of place and pride, uh, in our community. The farmer's market, the children's museum, and the Washington Center are all city-owned buildings, um, and investments, um, that really drive to that pride. We get information from them consolidating that year over year and looking at their performance as, as an indicator of community pride, I think is a very interesting piece there. We also do our citizen survey that we've been doing. We can, uh, questions, um, concerning, um, that community pride are asked in that, um, survey as well. And then finally, implementation and funding. So again, as I'd mentioned, it's a mix of programmatic and capital investments, fully implemented. So let's say money was not an issue. Realistically, to do this plan and fund this plan on an annual basis and really make that contribution to the economic development reserves that you could replenish that fund, build a capital fund to acquire land banking sorts of things, you'd probably be looking at a range of about one to three million dollars if you were looking to acquire a new piece of property on a relatively regular schedule. Um, and then also do the types of programmatic work contemplated. However, that number is going to really range on what's the, how much does the city do? What's the kind of partner investment into programs? How are we leveraging those programs? How can they leverage some of those programs? The level of capital investment that we want to be able to do on that income restricted housing, we know that that's the big one. I will say, if we were just looking at just those kinds of programs, the kinds of workforce training programs, the journeys to jobs and things of that nature, it's probably around four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars a year in investing in partners to do things like the navigator program. If I were to add just those up and not talk about that capital piece, you're probably in that range, um, to really be able to move through this. The good part, 2023 and 2024 are largely funded. We have a lot that we are currently doing right now, and there is a lot that we're able to carry over from this year into next year. We've extended some of those contracts and cobbled a couple of things together. There's very little, um, I've got a handful of budget enhancements that, maybe it'll make it through. Um, but for the most part, we'll see. Uh, loosening my tie. Sorry. But, um, but for the most part, 2023 and 2024 feels really pretty good, um, on, on what we're doing. There is a pinch point that comes in the future that we've done a lot of this work off of relief dollars. And we've tapped pretty heavily into the economic development reserves. And we don't really have a clear strategy or, or, um, mechanism to replenish that. So that is next year's objective is, um, what programs do we look to continue to expand? What funding sources make sense to be able to do this kind of work? So, uh, as, as Jay had mentioned, we took off on the, the, the sheet, the funding amounts, took off the timeline. I think it's best right now, focus on, are the initiatives right? And some of them are going to be driven by, can we get a grant to do that? What's the capacity of a partner that if we make a $10,000 investment, they've got some other thing that they can leverage that into a $70,000 program or something along those lines? We will have to be slightly opportunistic as we move forward. Next steps would be to finalize this draft plan. Uh, we are also working with our planning commission to incorporate and make sure that our, um, our economy chapter in our comprehensive plan is using language that is consistent with this and that our priorities are consistent. And then as I'd mentioned, we will need to explore longer-term funding options for some of the bigger pieces in this. And with that, I'm done. If there's any questions that you haven't had a chance to ask.
Your pro, Tim Gilman.
First, the dashboard. I really like the set of indicators that you put together there. And I, I think it would both be a tool for helping communications and also for fostering more partnerships. I, I, I think, you know, being able to provide year, year-to-year measures like that is super valuable. Um, and I have one specific thing that would make me real happy going home. You mentioned at the beginning that this broader outreach brought some new requests for help. And I would just love to hear an anecdote or two of what, what kinds of unexpected or new requests or threads of conversation did you find in this broader research?
You want to go first? You want me to go first?
Sure. Um, I'll, I'll circle back to that Ginny Burton who runs the OUT program. Um, so I, I, I asked Parfait Basale to join me on, in the early outreach, and I got an email 11 o'clock one night, and he says, you have to meet this woman. Um, so fast forward, I meet her for lunch and she's incredible, very compelling story. But we'd never done a really good job, um, in, integrating input from the justice-involved community. Um, you know, how do you break cycles? How do we reach people? How do we build bridges? And she, she spent years and years and years figuring this out. And if, if any of you haven't heard the story, I'm happy to tell you afterwards. But, um, that, and then that got us into all these other communities, into the immigrant community, people who went to prison that don't even speak English, right? And so, um, when we talk about reaching all people, that's, how far you have to go. And we hadn't done it before, in my opinion, um, very well. But Amy and Shawna, the interns, spent how many Saturdays over?
Asho.
At Asho?
Yeah, I would say that, that some of it was what we heard and some of the sort of aha moment was how we did things. So, um, we were at the Asho Cultural Center, which isn't in Olympia, it's in Tumwater. We were there for seven Saturdays in a row with this project. And I, I just think that the, um, that as a place. And I just think that the, that as a place and the kind of feedback that we got from just being present and accessible at a space like that was enlightening. The, I think one of the things that was also enlightening was just the genuine appreciation for coming to people and meeting them where they are, even when we did it with the industry sector. So we did an industry sector. We brought in some of the leaders of the healthcare industry. And then we did it with, we did that one a couple, we've done that one a couple of times now. And we've got a commitment to them that we're going to do it biannually. We did it with the auto mall. We've made a commitment to them that we'll do it either annually or biannually, depends on how much they want. And then we did it with the financial sector leads as well. Just the appreciation of, it was a two-way conversation. We shared with them not only things that were in this, but what's just going on in Olympia. Just the open of the dialogue in that space was, was refreshing and very positive. I, one of the things that I will say that was sort of interesting that I, I don't know why I hadn't sort of thought about it is this issue of, I'm in stress. Life is hard. And I'm literally thinking about what bill I'm paying, how am I going to accomplish whatever is needing to be done tomorrow? And there's so much noise in that space. You're hanging on to a job. Life is hard. And we have 1 million points of entry. There's a lot of resources, but you've got to seek them out. And it's confusing. I don't know where to hop on on this Candy Land-like or Chutes and Ladders-like experience. There's no clear roadmap when life is hard. And that is when you need the roadmap the most. And so we did have one thing in here. We said, create a household financial expense reduction toolkit. There are a lot of ways out there that you could utilize pretty quickly on maybe some minor household expense reductions that, we heard people, 25 bucks is going to make a difference for me right now. I think the role of the library in some of the conversations that we had and the space and the services that they provide in our community, that was enlightening. So there's a lot. I could go on, but...
You know, I want to give my credit for this. When we, so when we met with the auto mall, we were, we're trying to understand the implications of more people buying electric cars in the future. And they said, well, the first implication is that our power goes out all the time here. So how are we going to charge these electric vehicles? And so Mike facilitated a connection with PSE. And, you know, that's, those kinds of little things could be really huge since they're one of your biggest taxpayers in the community, showing them that you're here to help for reals.
For reals.
For reals.
Yes, thank you both. This is a lot. I'm just thinking a lot about the different graphs, all of the proposed initiatives that you have in response to all of those graphs. And I'm thinking about the disparities that the graphs show us. And, you know, how we might really try to get at some of those disparities with these proposed initiatives. Because I think we sometimes just, we take it, we look at it, and we say, this is, we assume it's going to help those disparities. And I think we have to be very intentional about addressing that. So I don't know if that means using our equity framework when we are launching some of these initiatives to ensure that we're getting at those disparities that we clearly have stated here in the plan. Because if we do that, I just strongly feel that we have, we don't just have an economic opportunity plan, we have an economic justice plan if we do that. And I really do believe this. This is great work. It's a big undertaking, but I think we can do it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
On that note, oh, do you have more?
I would just, I sometimes, because I'm an introvert, it takes me a while to digest, like, I'm still digesting the presentation earlier. Thank you for giving it to me twice. I have, I don't know how many of you have heard Marilyn Strickland talk about the job force in the next 10 years. I know you probably have many times over. But her statistics were scary, and you need to make sure you fact-check this a little bit. But she said, if we put every able-bodied person to work in the United States by 2030, we would still be 18 million jobs shy.
That's correct.
Which, this plan is, in my mind, as I look at it, is a way to keep people here, working in our community, in our small businesses, in the state, and everything. And that will make it resilient. It's everything about this. And I agree with Dante, economic justice. So I appreciate this in hindsight, looking at this. This is really, as a business owner, we need people to stay here to work, or we won't keep our doors open.
Thank, so what I will be doing, just so you're aware, I am going to move this forward into a more final quality. This obviously is still rough draft.
Pretty good rough draft.
I was going to say, these are awesome.
So we will be moving, we will be moving this forward to a more final-looking document and then schedule for council action.
Okay. Before the end of the year?
Before the end of the year.
Okay. Lovely. Well, thank you, both of you. And I know Jason's been a partner with us for a long, long time. And this is really, really important work. Glad to have you, your input and your help on this. And thanks, as always, Mike Reed. One of the best positions we ever developed was the economic development position.
Thank you.
All right. And for that, we, no further business. We are adjourned.